Good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. Wacoite Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is a little after 6:00. We are broadcast live on local channel 18. Call-in conference number is 508-539-1400, extension 8585. We're also streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpee.gov/channeldash18. I call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First order of business, approval of the minutes from the June 9th, 2021 meeting. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes. Any changes, edits?
Did not.
If none, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So be.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Okay, we have an A and R. Evan, you want to walk us through?
Yep, pretty straightforward. A and R proposal to create two lots to be annexed to each other, so essentially creation of two lots for land swap. They are on Poncorn Point Road. Number 84 has significant frontage, and the frontage is adequate. The number 80, you'll see, has frontage of like 98 feet, which is less than 150 required, but there was a variance issued for that frontage requirement back in 2005, and subsequently the plan references a subdivision plan that was approved and endorsed by the planning board under the subdivision control law. So this A and R as presented is adequate to form and is compliant with all the requirements for endorsement for an A and R. Any questions?
So me sign the 50 in one lot, and then they got a variance for the 80?
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
Everybody good?
Yes.
All right, motion to... We don't have the motion.
You'll need a motion to endorse the A and R as presented.
A and R.
So be.
Thank you, Dennis. Second?
Second. Does that have the stamp on it that says it's not a buildable lot?
Yes, it certifies that there are no determinations as to compliance with the zoning.
Any discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Let me sign it all.
I'll need everyone to sign it, and John, you have the Form N, which is the document that requires filing, that I need to file with the clerk, if I could have your signature on that document.
Yep.
That's all right.
Correct.
Is it dated?
I'll take care of that.
Okay.
Okay, public comment. We have five people signed up. I'm just going to reiterate the rules. Two minutes, it's not a dialogue between the comment and the planning board. We're here to listen. Note your questions. Please don't repeat yourself, or someone else, or questions that have already been asked at previous meetings. And I please ask you to stay within the two-minute timeframe. And the first up is Lynn Barbie.
I don't want to disappoint you all. I've got the visual aids back here. Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive, Mashpee. I was thinking a lot about Dennis's comments from last week about parking, and then I just wanted to point out that I heard on the radio today, the General Motors is moving to all-electric cars. So I hope it goes in your notes that not only will we need parking, but we will need plug-in parking for the houses, the apartments, and that I don't know that that's already in the plan, but I hope to see it in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point.
Yvonne Courtney.
Hi. Yvonne Courtney, 35, Preswick Lane. I'm just really concerned about the project impact on the town, and I went on the town website, and I found there are 22 different departments in the town. And I would love to hear from each of those departments how this project is going to affect them. Now, what do I mean by impact? Will they have to hire more people? Will they have to have more supplies? Will they have to work longer hours? Will this project sap all the energy so that the other people in the town will not get that kind of service? So you have to look at, and I'll give you examples of that, when we're talking about the fire and rescue, are we talking about building inspector? Are we talking about natural resources office? The policeman, emergency, rescue. A project like this is going to impact traffic, so you're going to have more accidents. Zoning department, planning department. So you really need to have a statement from each of these departments and say, how is this going to affect your budget? When they go before the town in the future, and I'm sitting there, and say, oh, this project didn't affect our department, you can say, what was in your statement? So each of the departments should, you should find out from them. What are they going to need? If you're going to have more people, you know you're going to have to have more supplies, more help. This costs money to the town, and that you need to figure out. One last thing about parking. I'm not good at reading plans. I want to know if the roads are the same size or smaller than the ones we presently have in the Mashpee Commons. You can figure that out better than I can. What do I mean by that? If you're going to have on-street parking, I go to Mashpee Commons quite often, people know that, and if you have a UPS truck, or any kind of truck, it blocks the traffic. Same with this development, you're going to have a lot of people with Amazon and so on. If you have a commercial building, you can't, and someone's living on the second floor, they will not be able to park right in front of that place. And we've mentioned about parking before, but I'm concerned about the width of the road to get in, emergency, rescue vehicles, and policemen. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alana Doyle.
Hello, members of the planning board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Kind of wanted to just pick up where I left off the last time I spoke to you, and let everyone know, I did eventually purchase a house back in 2017. After almost two years of looking, six offers, we finally were accepted for a house that was virtually uninhabitable for six months because of mold and animal remains that were left over. Anyways, we did remodel the house, and now we are living there. And if I had to buy the same house today with the same down payment that I had four years ago, I would not be able to afford it. In college, I studied business administration and management, economics 101, supply and demand. There is a ton of demand, and there is no supply. Like I said last time, over 80% of the houses that exist on Cape Cod were built before 1990. If you look at what you paid for your house, and you look at the value of it today, I guarantee you, you probably wouldn't be able to afford it today. And we have a whole generation of people on Cape Cod who want to live here, who have lived there here their whole lives, but without any additional supply, the demand for existing homes is going to continue to arise, which is going to raise the cost even higher than they already are. I think Mashpee Commons is one of the only developers that is really putting a plan forward to address housing in a substantial way, and I think that the planning board should seriously consider moving forward with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Mort.
Hello, Mashpee Planning Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Oh, it doesn't move. Okay. My name is Megan Mort. I am a resident of Barnstable, but I am here because, as a resident of Barnstable, with the housing the way it is now, we are looking everywhere for a home. It doesn't matter the town, we're not being picky. It could be in Sandwich, Dennis, Robbins Town, but highly unlikely. So it doesn't really matter where I live, housing matters regardless. I'm a native Cape Cotter, I'm an adult, I am a millennial, I'm a wife, a mother, a student, I am all of these things, and I'm also 37 years old. So I am inundated with comments all the time, maybe not personally, but online, in forums like this that say, well, all these people are going to be moving here, and these people this, and these people that, and it's like, these people are the 20, late 20s, early 30s who are looking to buy. They are trying to rent, and they can't. We are narrowly avoiding homelessness because our landlord is okay with signing another one-year lease. This will be our third year there. If he wasn't okay with signing it, we would have to be forced into an eviction. There is no place for us to go, along with our four-year-old son, and that's not what I want to do. We've never been late on rent, we are great tenants, but I would have no other choice. I'm not putting my son into homelessness without a fight. We have delayed adoption through the DCF due to housing instability. We were cleared for a background check, it took a year, and because of the housing instability, we put it on pause. So we're actually delaying adoption. That's a direct effect of housing. Development has been in the plan for decades for Mashpee Commons. This is not a new or novel idea. So the fact that anybody would be flabbergasted that this is happening is, quite frankly, bizarre. Two meetings ago, somebody named Richard Klein asked, who's going to pay for that and when, referring to emergency services, and I hear that repeated, and I'm appalled that people who live in a community surrounded by others would think, I'm not paying for your emergency services, I don't care how much an ambulance costs or an EMS truck costs. That's vile. We have a social contract towards each other. Anyway, I hope that comment sticks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Marjorie Hecht.
Good evening, everyone. At this point, we don't have a fiscal impact study. We don't know how much this is going to cost us. We don't have an environmental impact study, what is going to be the harm to our waters, wastewater and green space. We don't have a traffic study. How exactly are we going to deal with more traffic? And we don't have a housing survey. What does Mashpee need, at what rents? I mean, how do we satisfy people who are looking for homes, who can't find them? And exactly how is Mashpee Commons going to meet those needs? We don't know that. So we, and I mean everyone here, don't know any of this. We have a bottom line for Mashpee Commons, 1,710 new housing units, 1.2 million square feet of commercial space, and some drawings, but that's it. We need to know what these impact studies find and have an independent evaluation of them before proceeding. These studies take time, but nobody in the business world would move forward on a big new project without that kind of detailed information. Eventually, at some town meeting, Mashpee residents will vote on the development agreement and zoning bylaw. It's to the advantage of all of you to present the information fully and to listen to what residents want, or all this discussion will be in vain. It will be sent back to the drawing board. Lastly, 25 years for a development agreement and in perpetuity for zoning for a project of this scope is too long. Why not a staged project in phases? That would enable the most urgent part of the project, building housing, to start and to give us a way to measure the progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. In your packet is a schedule of meetings. We mentioned at the last meeting that we would put some specific topics for discussion at the meetings being scheduled. So you'll see, Monday is the joint planning board and selectman meeting with the Cape Cod Commission coming to explain the three-party development agreement process. We've got a meeting on the 30th, which will talk about subzones and uses. The meeting on the 7th will talk about neighborhood design, setbacks, lock coverage, dimensional requirements, those types of things. The 21st will be maximum densities, building height, and the 28th, parking and parking ratios. That's the outline from the commission and the commons. I think that makes pretty good sense. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts, comments, anything missing? Go ahead, Evan.
Just the only comment is, I think the 28th of July is not a regular meeting date. I think it's the last Wednesday, not the third Wednesday, so the board would need to consider a special meeting for that date, otherwise the 7th and 21st are your regular meetings.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Jack.
I understand you had discussions with them, and that's how they formulated this. Are they open to, obviously, if we, in our discussions, determined there's more other focused areas we want to talk about, they're open to setting more additional dates?
Yeah, I think ultimately, you know, most of the questions that I think have been presented to the board, with maybe a couple exceptions, have been intensely focused on process, which we will have the opportunity to address on the 16th with the Cape Cod Commission and with the Board of Selectmen, and they have been impact-related. Not really zoning-related. So I think we do need to continue through the zoning conversation, as we've laid out here, but it doesn't end, you know, once we've gotten through July 28th. I think there's an ample opportunity for the community and for the planning board and the selectmen to have an understanding of the process from the commission perspective and what their requirements are for those impact assessments and fiscal impact studies, traffic studies, you know, all the technical analyses that need to occur between now and the execution and ratification of a development agreement will really be laid out on the 16th, so I guess I'd really encourage everyone to participate in that meeting.
Actually, it's 21st.
The 21st, excuse me. Today's the 16th, is it not? Yeah. But yes, I think there'll be certainly commitment, you know, both from the Cape Cod Commission and their process congruently with their own subcommittee answering all of these questions from a regional perspective. Mashpee Commons will have an obligation to provide answers for those local considerations as well, for the same impacts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Dennis.
I'd like to see what some of the people said, like a plan before we start looking at zoning. I mean, I don't understand, we don't know, we're going to give them this zoning change, and then we're going to go along with the Cape Cod Commission says, but I'd like to see some plans right now, before I even talk about zoning changes. I don't understand, we're given a zoning change, but I don't understand what they want. All they do is give us a book with pictures in it. I mean, I'd like to see a layout of the streets, you know, for many things, traffic's going to be horrible if it ever gets built that big, you know, with stores and parking, but I don't understand why we're doing zoning changes. And first of all, too, the Cape Cod Commission works for the town, right? Is that their goal? Is that their purpose? They work for the town. I don't understand, while this process was going on, they didn't ask either one board member or two board members to go to the meeting with Mashpee Commons, the commission, and two board members, so we wouldn't be in the blind, like they came with these zoning changes. They've been doing this for three years. They started with the farm-based zoning, and they gave us a book five weeks before it had to be turned in to the town to go on the warrant. The same thing this time, five weeks before, they gave us the zoning, they changed it. I didn't even know nothing about what they're building, except the old 1,500 house that we want, their stories. I want to see a plan. I don't understand why Cape Cod Commission hasn't been coming to us. It seems like they're working for Mashpee Commons, and they're like their PR people coming in, and they're going to sell that project. They should have been working with the town, gave us more input in this. You know, I don't know, it seems like we're stepping over what we should be doing.
Well, Dennis, and not to disagree with you, but I do slightly disagree, and I think that both things go hand in hand, as we're asking questions about the zoning, because the zoning does play a role in how you plan it. So you kind of have to look at both things at the same time. I think they go hand in hand. It isn't we're doing the zoning before the planning. I think it all goes in hand in hand, and based on the discussions we have regarding some of the proposed zoning changes, impacts on how the plan's going to look. So I think they go hand in hand.
I hope so.
And I think on the 21st, when we speak with the Cape Cod Commission, because, like you said, it'll give us some clarity on what they discussed already, but it'll give us on how the process is supposed to go, and I think we'll all have input on how that process goes, and we'll have a better understanding. I think this is going to be one at a time. It isn't like they're going to, for me, I don't expect them to hand me a set of blueprints and say, this is what it's going to be. Because if the zoning doesn't apply, if the zoning doesn't apply, then those plans may be moot, because some of that is predicated on those zoning changes. So I think they go hand, for me, they go hand in hand, and I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think we'll get more as we go along these next few days.
So we're sure this zoning change ain't going to go on November or October?
See, I keep hearing that. First of all, it's been pushed off to a special potentially in March, but I don't think anyone in this board is going to go to the March meeting and propose a zoning change without a plan in hand. I don't, there's no way in the world we're going to do that. We may have the zoning figured out, but if we don't get the plan figured out, then we're not going to support it, and we're not going to have a public meeting to support it. I mean, I know that I won't.
I won't be that.
Right. So I think it goes hand in hand. I think in the next five meetings here, we're going to learn a lot about it, and I think if we just pause and go through these meetings, we'll have a better understanding. And for me, I want to learn about where they're at and where they're looking to go, and so that's why I'm looking forward to it. I don't have any, you know, preconceived notion of what this is until I see it. So, I mean, that's how I feel.
Only thing I got hopeful is the town people have to vote on this, and if they're not happy with this process, it's not going to pass.
I agree.
So Mashpee Commons is going to be more outward with everything. The questions they asked tonight were really good questions, what they wanted to see, and it wasn't against the Commons or for the Commons. They're curious to see how this is going to affect my town and their town and everybody that lives in this town. And the thing about affordable housing, I'd like to see how much, what they think affordable housing is. To me, affordable housing is something like $250,000 and under. They could be affordable housing $300,000, $400,000. I'd like to see what, instead of that 80%, 70%, I want to see actual numbers with affordable housing. I wanted to see, we're going to have so many houses that 200,000 to 250,000, so many houses for single people less or something. You know, I don't understand, I want to see a price of affordable housing, to see if we're helping the people here that are looking for houses, you know, and that can afford it, not a $300,000, $400,000 home, because the other homes are $600,000, so that's affordable in that project. Okay, I said enough.
Did you have something, John?
I'll just add to it, just a little bit of, I'll try to go as quick as I can here. Just, well, first of all, affordable housing, that's, we don't make the requirements of, it meets affordable housing according to the state requirements, or it doesn't. I mean, I understand what you're saying, it would be nice if it was more...
Why can't we do that? I mean, we're the town, and we give them a special permit.
I mean, but you're dealing right now with, those are state requirements of what meets the criteria of affordable housing. I mean, you're, I think you were digging deep into the weeds on that one, but on the other concept, you know, again, I'm not a voting member, you're talking about zoning and the whole thing. I hope you don't just, you know, go forward and make changes.
You mentioned that before.
And just to give you a little, you know, just to rewind a little bit, you know, we just dealt with this with, you know, wastewater. You know, we were, a year ago, we were, everyone was like, let's go, push forward, push forward. We put the hard brakes on it, and we waited a whole year, and what happened? A unanimous vote. So again, whatever it takes to get all the right answers, that's what you guys are here for, and again, when it's right, when we, when you guys feel you're ready to present it in a way that it can be approved by the town, because if you're going to approve something that's going to, you know that it's going to be rejected by the town, why are we all here? It doesn't make sense. So, and I'll stop talking.
Good point, John.
Go ahead, Mary.
So I hope what I'm going to say gets passed on to the project proponent, because I don't want to surprise them and have them not have heard this, so I'm hoping that the planning department will pass this on. But I do agree with Dennis, we need more visuals.
Because some of that is predicated on those zoning changes. So I think they go hand, for me, they go hand in hand. And I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think we'll get more as we go along these next few days.
So we're sure this zoning change ain't gonna go on November or October?
See, I keep hearing that. First of all, it's been pushed off to a special potentially in March. But I don't think anyone in this board is gonna go to the March meeting and propose a zoning change without a plan in hand. I don't, there's no way in the world we're gonna do that. We may have the zoning figured out, but if we don't get the plan figured out, then we're not gonna support it. We're not gonna have a public meeting to support it. I mean, I know that I won't.
I won't be that.
Right. So I think it goes hand in hand. I think in the next five meetings here, we're gonna learn a lot about it. And I think if we just pause and go through these meetings, we'll have a better understanding. And for me, I wanna learn about where they're at and where they're looking to go. And so that's why I'm looking forward to it. I don't have any, you know, preconceived notion of what this is until I see it. So, I mean, that's how I feel.
Only thing I got hopeful is the town people have to vote on this. And if they're not happy with this process, it's not gonna pass.
I agree.
So Mashpee Commons is gonna be more outward with everything. The questions they asked tonight were really good questions, what they wanted to see. And it wasn't against the Commons or for the Commons. They're curious to see how this is gonna affect my town and their town and everybody, you know, that lives in this town. And the thing about affordable housing, I'd like to see how much, what they think affordable housing is. To me, affordable housing is something like 250,000 and under. They could be affordable housing 300,000, 400,000. I'd like to see what, instead of that 80%, 70%, I wanna see actual numbers with affordable housing. I wanted to see, we're gonna have so many houses that 200,000 to 250,000. So many houses for single people less or something. You know, I don't understand, I wanna see a price of affordable housing to see if we're helping the people here that are looking for houses, you know, and that can afford it. Not a 300,000, 400,000 dollar home, because the other homes are 600,000, so that's affordable in that project. Okay, I said enough.
Did you have something, John?
I'll just add to it, it's just a little bit of, I'll try to go as quick as I can here. Just, well, first of all, affordable housing, that's, we don't make the requirements of, it meets affordable housing according to the state requirements or it doesn't. I mean, I understand what you're saying. It would be nice if it was more-
Why can't we do that? I mean, we're the town and we give them a special permit.
I mean, but you're dealing right now with, those are state requirements of what meets the criteria of affordable housing. I mean, you're, I think you were digging deep into the weeds on that one. But on the other concept, you know, again, I'm not a voting member, you're talking about zoning and the whole thing. I hope you don't just, you know, go forward and make changes.
You mentioned that before.
And just to give you a little, you know, just to rewind a little bit, you know, we just dealt with this with, you know, wastewater. You know, we were, a year ago, we were, everyone was like, let's go, push forward, push forward. We put the hard brakes on it and we waited a whole year. And what happened? A unanimous vote. So again, whatever it takes to get all the right answers, that's what you guys are here for. And again, when it's right, when we, when you guys feel you're ready to present it in a way that it can be approved by the town, because if you're gonna approve something that's gonna, you know that's gonna be rejected by the town, why are we all here? It doesn't make sense. So, and I'll stop talking.
Good point, John.
Go ahead Mary.
So I hope what I'm gonna say gets passed on to the project proponent, because I don't wanna surprise them and have them not have heard this. So I'm hoping that the planning department will pass this on. But I do agree with Dennis, we need more visuals. And I have asked repeatedly for these things, I'll ask for them again. We need, and it may be that, you know, if we don't get them until the development agreement process, then we have to come back and revisit the zoning bylaw line by line again. I really would rather push off looking at the zoning until we start the development agreement process. Because the, as far as I know, the development agreement application is not complete. So there's a lot of questions that I'm looking for, the answers, but it's not gonna be available until the development agreement, the development, development agreement application is complete. But the design book for these buildings. Definitely better visuals, the regulating plan with showing the lots and the major roads. A lot in this bylaw talks about what happens on a lot. We need to have some lots laid out for us to understand what this bylaw will do. They can have a mechanism to change it, but they have to show us what their lots are now. And I've seen some of their plans. They have, they've done this work, so I'm confident that they can give that to us. Evan, you were gonna give us the existing bylaw language pertaining to section E2. That hasn't come into our packet about the zoning enforcement officer?
Oh, I will reply to you via email.
But if it can come into our packet and be put on the website.
Sure.
I'd like a list of the pre-existing non-conforming buildings that they cite in J. Section J, they talk about pre-existing non-conforming buildings. So is it every single building that's there already? If it is, fine, but that, somebody needs to make a list of that. So that's section J. The figures in the back, a lot of them don't have any dimensions, so they should all have dimensions. They should be big. You can't read some of the stuff. And I noticed that the peak of the building doesn't have the maximum height. So everything in here has to be dimensioned. And again, I'm, you know, if you guys wanna go forward with this, fine, but we might be back at these steps as we have the development agreement application and start meeting. We're gonna be meeting on the development agreement too.
Anybody else?
Sorry, go ahead Rob.
I had a question on there, proposed change, bylaw change has to do, let's say it's page six, section H, which is the overlay district dimensional standards. And I'm just, got a blank here. But third column over in the table says minimum, minimum lot area. And there's no requirement for a minimal lot area in the core area. Transition, it's 1,700 square feet. And by the way, the heading for that column has a footnote number one, which is what my confusion is. And in the edge area, it's 1,980 square feet as a minimum lot size. Flag note, footnote number one, I didn't bring my glasses, but the minimum lot area of a single-family dwelling in a transition area shall be 26, 2560 square feet. What does that number mean relative to the 1,760 in the table? And then it goes down to the edge area, which is the minimum lot size of a single-family dwelling at the edge area shall be 3,600 square feet. Those two numbers seem to conflict with the table and I just don't make sense of it. Does anybody look at that? It's the footnote, footnote one under the table on page six.
I feel like I'm for an answer now, let me see.
I'm kinda like, what would you put in that small little lot of 1,700 square feet?
You put a house.
Almost seemed like they might have reversed the numbers.
You put a house on that lot.
Well, it seems like-
Would you put a duplex on a tiny lot?
Rob, the footnote is relative to a specific building type in those specific neighborhoods. So for a single-family dwelling, there's an exception for a single-family dwelling. It requires the transition area, the minimal lot area shall be larger for a single-family dwelling. But for all other building types and uses, it shall be what's shown on the table.
That's how I read it as well.
And this, we have special, there's like 17 special footnotes in our current zoning bylaw that provide exceptions and special exceptions. That's what that's saying, just that for a single-family dwelling, that particular use and structure in that area, there shall be a unique minimum lot size requirement as proposed. And I would just say, I've written your question down, let's have them elaborate on this on July 7th.
Mr. Chin, I have another one. It's about densities. So density is a ratio, which is like number of units per acre. They don't, it's an F and G. They don't have the densities, they just have total, total numbers. So we need the densities of these-
Different size lot.
Different dwelling, like the dwelling unit density per acre. You know, they can't have, they can't say it's a density if it's not a ratio.
Yeah, I've asked them to provide clarity to the board relative to their methodology for determining that maximum and we can kind of ask them to expand upon that relative to a ratio.
And the densities change between the two, the three areas too, right?
Yeah.
Right, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I'm really interested to learn what the methodology is for them determining the maximum density. Because, you know, it feels arbitrary without that methodology, so.
So should we ask them for their build-out calculations?
Yeah, I've asked them very specifically for how did you come up to that number?
I think that actual question was asked, the last time, for them to get it to us.
Yes, so they're preparing a response to that question and that will be responded to on July 21st.
July 21st. So that's why we've chosen specific topics. I mean, these are all very good questions. Specific topics for each meeting so that we can drill down.
Okay, another one in there? On page eight, section L, parking requirements. C and D talk about designated on-street parking in the core area. It's gonna be striped or may be striped. And undesignedated on-street parking allowed on all streets everywhere else. Now, the question I had is, if I could drive down a road, it's a street. They don't talk about alleys, but I would not expect parking to be allowed on an alley. However, every alley that holds a vehicle, that can pass a vehicle that I have ever driven on, is full of cars. Not just, not here, but in other cities, older residential areas. They just pile in anywhere to put their car. And, you know, they're parked on sidewalks, in between things. And I don't see anything here that says parking is prohibited in all designated alleyways.
Only just because I'm gonna speak from the fire department side. An alleyway wouldn't allow parking and it would be zoned that way. So it would be, have to be enforced. But if it doesn't meet the minimum criteria, as I already outlined in the town bylaws at 20-foot, and doesn't meet the acceptability by fire regulations on the 527 CMR, they won't be allowed to be parking. And though you may see cars parked in the city like that, enforcement will fix that. So we can't park, we can't stop someone from putting their car there, but we can sure tow it away when it's legally parked.
Okay, so you had the magic word, I was looking for it, enforcement. Currently in Mashpee Commons, there is a post office, US post office, with half a dozen spaces on one, on the, I'm not sure what this little street is. Says 15-minute parking for a post office. My wife is always bent out of shape when she's there. And there are many cars, there was one great big SUV and it had a sun visor in the windshield, you know, one of those reflectors.
Long-term parking.
Long-term parking. They're all over across the street at Blue's having a lovely lunch. They're all there, so she went to security at Mashpee Commons and said, oh no, we don't patrol that signage. You'd have to go to the police department. She spent an hour at the police department. And they, and the reception said, oh, they're kinda busy now. And after an hour, she came back and said, they don't wanna discuss it.
I hope she got to the post office.
For me, I don't-
So who's going to enforce parking in the alley, keeping your truck going down?
But as John just said, that's a great question and it's something that could be part of the agreement. Absolutely, why not? Because, you know, as Dennis points out, fire trucks aren't gonna get it down an eight-foot alleyway.
I have a question. That's private property, so-
Well, that's, and that's-
So why would the police go there?
The police department can, they can actually set up a, an agreement with the police department to enforce parking regulations on private property. So they can, the selectmen can work through that with the police department. So there is avenues to take. It's just a matter of going down that avenue and writing it up.
And who plows that? Is the town gonna have to plow this development because it's still private and they're gonna have to have their own plow?
Again, that's all part of the agreement with the town. I highly doubt the town will be plowing.
Right now, that's Mashpee Commons, that's it.
Vaughn said it could cost the town money now.
Well, that's part of the development, you know, part of, this is all process and all part of the, you know, what we get to talk about in the development agreement.
I can certainly go, we're not picking up plowing, that's a long story.
All very good questions.
Town road is plowed by the town. If it's not, it may not-
It's private, yeah, okay.
John, can I ask Mary a question?
Yes.
Visuals.
Seaberry does plow and they're private?
Can you, what am I asking for in terms of visuals? Better graphic representations of what the anticipated built form is?
So you want some basic lots carved out in some, their major roads. So their regulating plan, they should have on their regulating plan some major blocks and major roads.
Yeah, agreed.
Then those can get, have sublots, you know? Like those blocks can be carved up into sublots per their design book.
Okay.
They don't wanna, I don't think they wanna give us that, they want maximum flexibility. But we don't have to accept that. We can get their regulating plan to a point where we're confident that there's throughways, traffic throughways, this development. And that on these major blocks, we know what's gonna get built, what height, what type of design. All those pictures we saw, which picture goes to which block?
Okay, I understand.
I have a feeling that there's this one area, I've been to every charrette and meeting on this for years. I have a feeling I know where that picture that we pointed to on page 21. I have a feeling I know what area they wanna put that on. But we, we can say this block pertains to these setbacks. They've proposed something maybe a little different, but then these blocks over here, you know, can't have huge buildings that are connected together all in a row that looks like the South End in Boston, you know? It has to look more cottagey, more Cape Cod-ish. And you can't have that discussion unless you have the regulating plan with the major roads and major blocks that you can actually like number, so you can talk about things. They have a lot of pictures that are kind of at an angle.
Yeah.
We need the plan, you know, from the air, the plan view with dimensions on it. And maybe some labels so we can talk about them. I really like the colorized pictures, that really helps. But when you're having a zoning discussion, it makes it very difficult. There's a lot of green and all, they love green. It means different things in different illustrations, but if we just have a black and white plan, and yes, full-size.
Does that give you another clarity?
Not eight and a half by 11.
I know exactly what Mary's looking for. I think it would be helpful for the board. I think the only thing I think the board should consider if we're gonna ask for such a detailed regulating plan, which I think is important and I did encourage and ask for at the beginning of this process, would be also a consideration, because I think the hesitation is for a multi-phase project over a number of years, to provide a very highly detailed regulating plan without a mechanism to modify that regulating plan is difficult on the developer's side. So I think that's one thing that we need to think about is, let's ask them for it, let's get it. But we need to know how to modify it as conditions change.
Right, I agree.
You can see like on page 19, there's images that were cut out from other big images, right?
You wanna look at that within the broader context of the rest of the neighborhoods. I get it, I totally get it.
We got it.
So those images are there.
Yeah.
They're in somebody's computer.
Please. So if I hear you correctly, I mean, I'm thinking major intersections, if you will, or, you know, hubs of the development. Bring back some visual charrettes so we can visualize what this, at least we know, okay, they're gonna build from, this is what this intersection's gonna look like, or this piece. And then obviously, it can change other parcels, but at least we know major parts. But again, I'm, visual, that's, it's everything.
And those throughways of traffic. So you sat on the planning board, you saw that our planning board engineer would move roads over to help with line of sight and to line up with other roads. So we should really set where the major collector roads, well, I would call a collector road, you know, where people are gonna pass through this area, make sure they're lined up so you're not zigzagging to the connecting road across, right? Those things, there are things like that in Mashpee and we need to make sure that those major roads are set out. And also those major blocks and what is gonna be built on them.
I've been asking for a road layout ever since they came here and they still haven't given it to us, you know?
I just wanna note, if I may.
Please.
The, you, in the neighborhood, in the plan you received, I don't know, this past month, laying out the neighborhoods, there is a very conceptual layout of the street network on that plan. What Mary's asking for, I think, is additional detail to understand how the buildings and blocks lay out against those streets, which I think is a good recommendation. What I wanna just remind the board is the differentiation between the development agreement process and the DRI process. Whereas the DRI is a fully 100% design, building and site plan. What we're dealing right now is a long-term project without individually designed buildings and an individually designed street network, et cetera. So it might be beneficial to ask them to lay this out in high detail in the specific phases with a mechanism to modify as the plan unfolds over the term of the development agreement.
But I will say, just to add on to Mary's comment, is that what we see was an eight and a half by 11 view of that. And you just said a key thing and the reason why I bring up comment. I don't want them to give us an eight and a half 11 of a specific area. I would rather see a bigger, a bigger outline of the whole plan, of the whole proposal. Now granted, it's not cotton and stone, but it gives me a better conceptual look of it. And then if they wanna focus in on certain areas, then I can at least know where I'm looking at. Just like that book does where it takes out little snippets of part of their plan. If we only get little snippets of these intersections, it doesn't give us a good idea of the whole plan. So they can give us a bigger picture to look at, because in eight and a half 11, though you can see the streets and stuff like that, as Mary points out and as I point out, you don't have that lot size kind of understanding in your head. So if you could just relay that to them.
Yeah, certainly will. I think it's gonna be important as we go through the whole process and beyond just the zoning conversation, is a discussion of how will this project be phased? Is it going to be by a certain square footage? Is it going to be by a certain number of dwelling units? Is it gonna be by neighborhood? As we have an understanding of the phasing of the project, we can have an understanding of that level of detail that needs to be laid out before the execution or ratification of the development agreement. And those details that can be addressed in future phases. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I just had a question-
I just had a question or thought, uh, when it comes to these now set-up topic meetings, which I think is good, so we can be focused on each point. When it comes to the public, uh, comment and questions, should they be focused, do you think, on each topic of that week, of that meeting? So we're staying on point, kinda moving forward, do you think?
I would hope the public would.
I would hope so, but I mean, just the way I'm-
I mean, public comment is public comment, but it would be better if it was focused on what we're talking about that night.
It's a-
Well, once this gets posted, and the public can see each, what's going on, so we can be informed of each topic. Instead of sometimes might be going off realms and tangents that may happen.
Very logical.
You don't know what they're gonna say until they-
Well, we're gonna ask, we're gonna-
Public comment, they get to say what they want.
But the schedule will be published.
Lady poppers.
You know, we're gonna be very specific in each meeting. I would hope that the questions would be relevant to the meeting.
All right.
And we, you're okay.
Relevant to the topic.
Can I make another suggestion? I know that everybody's been really busy, but I haven't been getting my agenda the week before. We usually get them on Friday, um, and I know you've been really busy.
We just have so many meetings.
And I'm like, I'm like, are we meeting, or are we not meeting? Where is it? And it's just weekends are my downtime to read and just, eh, and, and it's also, I said, it's also a comment for the project proponent. You know, if they're not, if they don't have the materials for us, for us to look at the Friday before a meeting, then maybe they should postpone it. Because if they provide the materials at the meeting, it's just a waste of my time.
We did have that in our agreement, that they had to give us, you know, the town planner would have to give us, uh, schedules like a week before, so we could look at it instead of like, one day or two days before.
You know, we do that as general practice, you guys know that.
Yes.
We've had a substantial amount of meetings, and I would ask for a little bit of flexibility from the boards that we can actually do the proper administration within the rules and regulations of the town and the state.
That's fair.
That makes me feel better hearing that it was just, it was just a time crunch.
Well, yeah, we've had, uh, many meetings. Understood. Okay, anything else? All right, moving on, um, town planner report.
Just noting that we, uh, the submission deadline for the responses to the RFP for the local comprehensive plan passed on the eleventh. We received two responses. I provided the responses to Mary and, uh, John, who you've designated to be the, uh, rev- initial review team. Be contacting that, contacting that, contacting them by the end of this week to set up a time to evaluate those proposals on just responsiveness to the evaluation criteria. And we'll come back to the board after that with recommendations, uh, to further discuss with the whole board and make a recommendation to the town manager. So hoping for three, we got two. We'll follow up with you upon further evaluation, and I'll follow up with both of you by the end of the week.
Questions, anybody? Good, thank you, Evan. Okay, committee reports, Cape Cod Commission.
I, I have no report.
Community preservation?
Uh, we're meeting on, uh, June twenty-fourth. Um, and as soon as I get, um, the agenda, I'll share it with you. I, I don't know, uh, what prompted the chair to, um, call the meeting, but usually it's a vote on an expenditure. So I'll make sure you guys know, 'cause you know what I think it's gonna be.
Is that the thing I asked, to be able to be notified about, so we could see how that process works? Is that one of the meetings I would wanna attend, or is it?
You are welcome to attend.
I know, but-
And hopefully they'll leave public comment on the twenty-fourth. And usually it's at seven.
All right.
And I'm sure it's gonna be Gooseberry, oh, I think it's gonna be Gooseberry, I don't know, that's-
Uh, design review?
No meeting.
Plan review?
No meeting.
Environment oversight did have a meeting, unfortunately, I was at a special planning board meeting. So I, I will get the minutes and circulate them to everyone. Historic district commission?
No meeting.
Military civilian advisory council?
We didn't have a meeting, but I did get contacted by the governor's office this morning. So after two years, they are finally processing the paperwork to appoint me to the commission.
Almost, congratulations.
Yeah, it's not done yet, but I-
Can we frame that when we finally get that?
There's gonna be a change in administration, and you're not gonna be able to ever join.
Crazy.
Very good, thank you. Anything else?
No, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.